You good?
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council.
I'm going to check yes.
Today is May 17, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. At this time, I would like to lead everyone into a Memorial Day tribute. As we approach Memorial Day holiday, I would like to take this time to honor all of our fallen heroes who have given everything for their country. Memorial Day is a day of reflection and remembering the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. We owe a debt to our fallen heroes that we can never fully repay, but we can honor their sacrifices by holding their memories close to our hearts. We are going to play a short Memorial Day tribute video. Please focus your attention on the video screens to the left and right directly behind me. Please remain seated during the video. Please start the video.
It is, in a way, an odd thing to honor those who died in defense of our country, in defense of us, in wars far away. The imagination plays a trick. We see these soldiers in our mind as old and wise. We see them as something like the founding fathers, brave and gray-haired. But most of them were boys when they died, and they gave up two lives, the one they were living and the one they would have lived. When they died, they gave up their chance to be husbands and fathers and grandfathers. They gave up their chance to be revered old men. They gave up everything for our country, for us. We owe them a debt we can never repay. All we can do is remember them, what they did, and why they had to be brave for us.
I asked our community to please pray for the families of the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice. You know, we may only remember this once a year. They remember it every day. So I asked our community to pray to give them strength to get through each and every day of that loss that they have to experience. Please stand for the singing of the National Anthem led by Emily Miller of Oasis High School.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Emily Miller, for coming in today and singing that National Anthem for us. We appreciate that. Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Costin, Cummings.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. The only change that I would request is item nine, C1, under unfinished business. There was a topic of discussion for boards and committees. City management and the city attorney felt we may need to have some additional conversation, but after review, they said there was no need at this time for any additional discussion. So I would ask to remove that item for this week anyway.
Motion to approve the agenda with removal of the item.
Second.
I see a couple lights on here. Councilmember Costin.
My light is on for a different reason. I think we forgot the pledge.
That, we did the National Anthem. The pledge was not on the agenda for today.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costin.
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
The next item on the agenda is recognitions and achievements. At this time, I would like to recognize an employee for their outstanding service and dedication to the city of Cape Coral. I want to thank them for their contribution to the city and all the efforts they put in on their daily responsibilities to make our city a better place. Thank you for being such a valuable member of our team. Madam City Clerk, could you please read the name of the recipient who was unable to attend tonight's presentation?
Daniel Franz, 26 years of service.
Let's give Daniel a round of applause. Thank you. And also, tonight, we have a community recognition award. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked to put this item on the agenda to begin issuing awards to city residents for their exemplary performance and showcasing the talented community members that we have living in the city of Cape Coral. Tonight or today, I am happy to introduce Andrea Samuels and her award-winning Papillon Gabby. Gabby is a two-time AKC National Agility Champion. In 2019, she won the Westminster Masters Agility Finals. In 2022, Gabby came in second in the AKC Premier Cup Finals and was invited to the Purina Incredible Dog Challenge. And then, more recently, the recognition that caught my attention in March of this year, not a couple weeks back, Gabby and Andrea competed in the 2023 AKC Agility Championship, which they were the winners of. When I saw this, it got me thinking about all the great things that the members in our community can accomplish, and I want to begin recognizing those publicly. So with the help of my communications team, I asked them to reach out to Andrea and Gabby to see if they could come in and show off their talents. And I have an award, Mr. Mayor. I'd like, if you could come down and help me present that to her. But prior to that, I would like just to show you a video of what they accomplished, and then there'll be a small demonstration before the award.
Next up, Indiana eight-inch height class is Gabby, a Papillon handled by Andrea Samuels from Cape Coral, Florida.
Andrea, champion here at the Masters Agility Championship.
Three-time champion, once with Gabby. They're the last to run. Look at those legs go!
Uh-oh. Whoa!
Missed the first weepole.
Yep. Coming down that dog, what beautiful speed there! Get up and over that A-frame.
Might it not matter, that time fault?
We're about to find out. Hit that teeter, wait, and then go! Nope!
Just couldn't make it up. Boy, this is the difference right here.
Yeah, and I'm unsure if she knows, but she's got to know. She's got to know. Up and over that A-frame. Here's that teeter. There we go.
Next up, Indiana eight-
Your show.
I'm very honored that we're receiving recognition from the city of Cape Coral. It was pretty shocking when I got the messages and calls. I really didn't know what I was expecting. Gabby's been, she's seven years old, and she's been doing agility pretty much since she was age-eligible, and she's pretty much the top eight-inch dog in the country of all breeds. And what you just saw was Westminster, which was like literally maybe two weeks ago, not even. And she was the top seed going into the finals. And as you saw, she missed the first weepole because she was just going so fast that she couldn't just control it. But with that said, she still had the fastest time in the height. But she had won Westminster in 2019 and had been in the finals pretty much three times. And if, I don't know if anybody is aware that a few years ago there was a meme going around all of the internet, social media, of Shrek running agility? Well, Shrek was Gabby. So, but we did win and repeat our AKC Agility National Championship in Tulsa, Oklahoma this past March, which is what you were referring to. And we're just honored to be here. Thank you.
What I have here is a community recognition award. And what it says is, it has the city of Cape Coral emblem on the top. It says, "Community Recognition Award 2023. The city of Cape Coral is pleased to recognize your accomplishments. Thank you for coming in. This is for you."
That's our ribbon from the national.
We're going to pull some stuff out of here for a couple minutes while-
Sure. Go ahead. We'll wait until you get that done before we start. Okay, item seven on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from a regular meeting of May 3, 2023?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries. Item eight is citizens' input time, a maximum of 60 minutes. The set for input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. We'll be utilizing the podium to my left, your right. Come on up, sir.
Hi, my name's Ralph Huber, H-U-B-E-R. And good afternoon, Mayor Gunner, Councilman Long, and the other members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I'm here wearing three hats, and I know I'm bald and probably need more than that, but as a private citizen, as a homeowner at 211 Northwest 31st Place, Cape Coral, Florida, also as an active member of the Nextdoor neighborhood, and as the communications chairman for the Northwest Cape Coral Neighborhood Association. I would point out that our president for the association is not here because he has a family member graduating, so I stood in for him. The Nextdoor neighborhood members, representatives of the Northwest Cape, and myself attended the May 16 public hearing in these chambers yesterday regarding the case number VAC2200033. At that time, we were instructed and understood that the meeting was not about the construction of a storage facility, but rather requesting of granting an easement to allow for the consolidation of a property into a larger tract enabling that expanded use, enabling the expanded usage of that tract of land for commercial development. I had three issues with that notice. The first was the 500-foot notice to property owners, which reached approximately six people or six properties within 500 feet of where the property was being developed. The city staff indicated that this is all that was required. And I told the public hearing assembly that while perhaps that was the rule, in my opinion, and as a homeowner in the immediate area, this is woefully inadequate and does not do justice to the area homeowners. Had the notice to homeowners been more broadly disseminated, the impact to the Northwest community at large would have been given the opportunity to participate in that hearing. I was sent a copy of a public notice by a member of the NWNA Association. It was taken quite, taken back that I, as a property owner within a quarter mile of this property, had not been notified. I was really quite disappointed with that. I felt that our neighborhood and the NWA as a whole should be made aware of this activity affecting residential, a residential street, Northwest 32nd Place or Second Street, with multimillion-dollar homes. I went to the city's website to view the agenda for this meeting and found that VAC220033 was to be discussed in the 16th of May and downloaded a copy of the agenda. To my surprise, it was for a three-story storage facility, a facility being grandfathered in in light of the recent moratorium on these properties or facilities in Cape Coral. I was told that there were signs put up to notify the neighborhood. We didn't see any signs, and nobody from the, in the meeting, saw any signs either. And the city told me that probably they were taken down likely to protest the development in this area.
Sir, your three minutes is up. I'm sorry. My recommendation to you, because it sounds like you have some more to say, is maybe email all of council for whatever position that you may have regarding that project.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is George Starner, and I'm an 18-year resident of Cape Coral. Even though item nine, C1, was eliminated from today's agenda, I would like to discuss that. I'm not sure I'll be able to attend your next meeting. That item has to do with the dissolution of the Budget Review Committee. In 2015, I attended a 13-week course given by the city then known as the Citizens Academy. The purpose of this class was to teach ordinary citizens about the inner workings of the city and to promote volunteerism. In 2016, I volunteered for and was appointed to the Budget Review Committee. For the past seven years, I have attended monthly meetings throughout the year, had given up several weeks of my summer each year to participate in the budget process. I have served as committee chair, vice chair, and member. As far as I can tell, I've served on a committee longer than any other prior or existing member. Former Mayor Coviala said from the dais that he thought the BRC was the most important volunteer committee that the city had. Our current mayor said the same thing in several of our meetings when he was the council liaison for the BRC. Almost every week, there's an ad in the Cape Coral breeze asking for volunteers to work for the city. If your vote tonight, or next week, or two weeks from now is the same as last week's Cal meeting, it will be a slap in the face to those same volunteers. Instead of "thank you for your service," it's "sit down and shut up. We don't need or want your input." Resolution 5-12 established the BRC in 2012. Section three of that resolution says the prime consideration of council when selecting members shall be their financial background, including education and previous experience in the budgetary environment. When you were elected, it was because of your popularity, not your budget experience, expertise. At last week's BRC meeting, the Cape Coral police chief gave a presentation. Our council liaison said it was great, but it had nothing to do with the budget. I would disagree. His vision and plans for the future and what resources he would need, he would need to get there were important for us to know as we formulate our support during the 2024 budget cycle. The same goes for all departments who meet with us. At the Cal meeting last week, it was mentioned that the recommendations made by the BRC were rejected nine times out of 10 during the last five years. Nowhere in the ordinance establishing the BRC did it say that members should agree with council all the time. Many of you probably don't know this, but the idea to promote public-private partnership for sunsplash was originated with the BRC. This has led to a half-million-dollar savings for each year that the agreement is in place. I find it curious that two months after the former mayoral candidate became chairman of the BRC, the current mayor is proposing to eliminate the BRC. Why is that? To those council members who support the BRC, thank you. For those who do not, shame on you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Pat Merchant, a four-year member of the BRC, here to speak in favor of the BRC. Several of the points George made, and he was our chairman for a while, I was going to make. The resolution was from February 2012. The input, according to this resolution, the input may be most efficiently obtained by the use of a review committee to assist and make recommendations to the budgetary process. When appointing members, which George mentioned, you must have an educational background, experience for a government process or private sector process, accounting experience, high-level financial management, such as a CFO, as directly overseeing the budgetary process. I don't think all the average citizens who might come to meetings have that kind of background. The other thing I want to follow up on is, yes, the committee has recommended for several years the privation of the water park and the golf course, and these have taken place and saved several thousand dollars. And there are one more recommendation. The responsibilities of the review, Budget Review Committee shall include, but be not limited to, the following duties: review the city manager's proposed budget asset improvements program and provide recommendations of expenditure and revenue allocations; review the annual strategic plan as part of the budget process; review non-departmental applications for funding and provide funding recommendations in accordance with directions received from the mayor and city council; review financial management policies and provide recommendations for revisions where appropriate; address any other financial matters as requested by the city council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. My name is John Dins, and I am here today to speak about a code and, uh, an ordinance, 4420, on pervious surface parking. Back in February, I was cited with a compliance request because I built a driveway out of shell adjacent to my single-car driveway. I use shell with a ground cover to prevent any runoffs, which the concrete which is approved does. The shell, being a pervious surface, is in the ordinance being prohibited. In my opinion, the shell is much more attractive than the concrete that is accepted. And it also, it also has, the pervious surface has benefits. It recharges the groundwaters. It, water can reach and contribute to the water table for future use. It filters out pollutants in the water, reduces contaminations in surfaces of waters, like rivers, lakes, which we have many, the ocean, and it reduces the chance of flooding. Concrete runs right off into the drainage dish, into the water, pollutes the waters, and also adds to the chance of flooding when we have large storms. Areas like, and I know we're not in Captiva, Sanibel, Bahia, or Naples, but million-dollar homes have their driveways done in shell. It's gorgeous. It looks a heck of a lot better than concrete. The extension of my driveway was done prior to the passing of the ordinance. The ordinance was back in June of 2020, I think, June 8, and my surface was already previously installed. The right-of-way, which most places are- The right-of-way, which most places are grass, and state law provides, you can park on your right-of-way. I'm having a difficulty time realizing the difference between parking on the right-of-way grass and being unable to park on a shell surface, more attractive. So I'm coming here today to raise the issue and hopefully we can revisit this and get variances.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Bob Lawson, 4453 Orchid Boulevard, here to comment for myself and a small group of concerned residents on your plans to demolish the Yacht Club building by August. I've been told by several city employees it was damaged beyond repair by Hurricane Ian, that there was five feet of water in the building, that a tour wasn't possible because it was unsafe, that FEMA regulations required it to be torn down. I assume this was all true and I wasn't being misled. But starting a few days ago, I'm finding out otherwise. My understanding now is there was no floodwater in the main ballroom, that the roof didn't leak, that the hurricane damage was limited to a broken window, and so I've submitted a public records request to try and get documents to back up what I've heard. But more importantly, I've also learned that FEMA offers exceptions to the 50% rule for historic buildings. And so I have a handout, and I believe each of you have in front of you, the Flood Plane Management Bulletin for Historic Structures put up by FEMA. And so it appears that the hurricane and FEMA are being used as an excuse to clear the site for commercial development, to make it more attractive for a public-private partnership, and that there's misinformation and a rush to demolish the building before residents find out that it really, it's really not that badly damaged. And I, and I wonder why the city isn't using the historic nature of the building to get relief from the FEMA regulations. I've also brought with me, and you should have in front of you, it turns out the city has a historic preservation ordinance, and its ordinance number is 2-120.17 to 2-120.23. And also there's a resolution 15-98 from 1998 declaring the Yacht Club a historic place by the city. And in the, in this ordinance, it also sets forth a detailed procedure of what has to happen before a historic building can be demolished. And so I'm wondering, will the city be following its own laws? The city's preservation ordinance also prohibits demolition by neglect. And it's my understanding that there's been no power in the Yacht Club building for months, and so I'm asking myself, how, how can that be? Bottom line is, we shouldn't demolish a historic landmark under false pretenses. My questions are, when can power be restored? And secondly, when can our small group of residents and local news media get a tour of the building?
Thank you.
Lou Navara, long-term resident. My State of the City Council, this is the six-month report, waste of millions of taxpayers' dollars for lawsuits. Removal of the Loch Ness Monster, we must have spent, I don't know, I'm not even going to guess. City attorney lawsuit, city lawyer for investigating a council member, the list goes on and on. Budgets for outside attorneys are around $650. This does not include the city attorney's salary of $189,000. We got a couple, several deputy attorneys that aren't included. Budget Advisory Board and others. Removal of the democratic process input from citizens. Bad. Council members will replace the boards? That's Council Member DS. Why, why do we have a budget committee when we have a big finance department that we work closely with? That's Pretty Woman over there. Oh, come on. You, you don't work with those people. What's the budget for next year, council lady? I bet you don't know. Council members and the mayor, a town hall presentation once a year, giving everyone a chance to come and, or watch from home. Those town hall meetings don't go anywhere. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. I feel it's fascism. You want to do away with all the input. That's one of the few things the citizens can do anymore. City review of base salary for rank and file. I've been saying 15%. I proposed it. The city council got an automatic 8.9 cost of living. It's built in. You didn't do it, though. They circumvented the charter about seven, eight years ago. Civil rights and charter violations, you still make up the rules as you go along. You're all marching to a beat of a different drum. Conclusions. Leave all the advisory boards. It ain't broke. A complete independent audit of the city budget at no cost, and I know how to do that. Cease and desist wasteful budget expenditures. Reinstate First Amendment rights by following the city charter. Recognize constitutional rights to petition council. Let's call the council members by name. Rank and file pay raise, I want it. Two, you said maybe you'll raise it to $15 an hour. Mayor, you're making 46.5 approximately. Council members are making 41. This is a civic duty, not a part-time job, and you're always complaining. You're overworked.
Thank you, sir.
Shame on all of you.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and our city manager, Mr. Michael LaChilzim. My name is Bartholomew Mazzara. I live 5765 Flamingo Drive. I've been within 200 yards of the Yacht Club for 40 years full-time. So I know the Yacht Club very well. I know the city very well, probably preceding many of the people here. Anyways, I've got a couple of things in my craw amongst many. But one of them is regarding the Yacht Club. And I sent email to some council members and I was refr, it was refreshing for me to be able to sit with Ms. Cummings to express some of my thoughts. Thank you so much, Patty. And I'm still yet to hear from my District One, my own district, Mr. Steenke. He hadn't responded to my emails. Wanted to meet with him. But I wanted to do it in public forum now because in a private forum, it's not going to work. So I have two thoughts. They may be considered radical, but I think most people here would agree that they're not so wild, my ideas. First of all, Yacht Club. Secondly, it would be in and out of Cape Coral, the evacuation process, the bridges. Cape Coral Yacht Club is, need to be renovated. I understand that, including the basin. I'll read the following from local media. After a year-long process, questions about the future of the Fort Myers Yacht Basin recently were answered. We're in city council, approve an agreement with the Dallas-based Suntech Marina. In a 5-2 city council vote, the Fort Myers Yacht Club basin is to be leased out to Suntech, who leased and built many marina-based facilities, including the Mammoth Marina Jack Facility in downtown Sarasota. It also leases and operates more than a dozen marinas in Florida and other states. The investment in infrastructure and improvement will be as much as $45 million and no less than $30 million by contractual agreements. A provision in the lease states Suntech must spend at least $17.5 million on docks, wet slips, seawalls, and related infrastructure within six years. Minimum annual base rent is $400,000. So they're reaping 400K a year in renting that basin for the first five years, and an increase of an additional $100,000 each year for the next five years. After that, every five years, the base rent amount will increase by 10%. We should not burden our citizens and saddle them with floating hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of bonds, plus interest, paying debt. A lease agreement might be viable. Oop, 10 seconds left. The other thing is, I got to just touch upon this. I could go on and on. A new Cape Coral Bridge off Cape Coral Parkway is not going to work. You cannot get past Cape Coral Parkway into Fort Myers. We need another bridge.
Thank you, sir.
And the other bridge has to go south.
Thank you.
Palatin, Skyline, or Chiquita.
Thank you, sir.
And ultimately, it'll be a loop like any big city.
Thank you.
To I-75. I'll speak next time. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Tom Shadrack, a resident and member of the Budget Review Committee. As my co-members have said, we're a little shocked by the fact that you're preference to do away with the citizen involvement within the workings of the city government. The most offensive issue to me, though, was that you said you don't take our recommendations, or you haven't nine out of 10 times. And I think Mr. Hayden correctly said that a lot of our recommendations have been taken. And, but if you choose not to take them, it may not always just be the fact that you're doing the right thing. Most of our recommendations are based on good financial decisions or good accounting principles that we see are flawed. Now, the example I have, Patty will show just one of our recommendations that we gave. And it just basically said, "to support year-over-year clarity and comparison, detail and explain changes to accounting policy." And one of the problems we saw is that the Finance Director eliminated the, the reserves from the budget this year, but he didn't show you the comparison from last year's budget without the reserves. And then I'm going to show you a sheet where we talked about three times with the council, where it shows that they, that the Finance Department said there was a $33.4 million reduction in expenses this year over the prior year. And that's simply just a misleading statement because he didn't have the financial reserves in the current budget like they were the prior year. Now, the chart I have below, just shifted up a little, I put the reserves, showing the reserves out of last year's budget, and shows you actually increased costs by $200 million in last year's budget, not a $34 million reduction. These are things we pointed out to you, and they weren't fixed, but you actually spent 200 million more than the prior year. Now, you know you did that. I mean, look at all the extra stuff we approved last year, between the police training station, the fire training station, the fleet management, the UEP North One, all the $20 million worth of new one-time projects we did. It added up to over 200 million, yet you have a report that shows a $37 million reduction. That's the kind of stuff, financial acumen that we brought to the table. We have that experience. We show it to you. Doesn't mean you always accept it. But I think we have a valuable service to the city, and it's unfortunate that you think the time and talent that people have and are willing to devote to the city is being wasted. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, I am Chuck Warren of Coral, of Cape Coral. Good after, good afternoon, members of council and fellow Cape Coral citizens. My name is Chuck Warren. I am an Air Force veteran and part of the family at Coral Ridge Funeral Home and Cemetery, located at the corner of Pine Island Road and Chiquita in the great city of Cape Coral. I would like to thank you today for the opportunity to speak to you. Each year, we at Coral Ridge host a Memorial Day remembrance ceremony to pay tribute to the heroism of our fallen veterans. The service will begin, will bring community leaders and veterans organizations together to honor those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for our country, our true heroes. This year's ceremonies will include our very special guests, the Gold Star parents and families. These are individuals who have lost a child or sibling while serving. Some of the participants this year will include the Honorable John Gunter, J. Milk, J. Mick Shildrake, Senior Chief, United States Navy, retired, State Representative Mike G. Lombardo, District 79, Chaplain Juan Cordero, Vietnam Veteran, First Sergeant, United States Army, retired, Anne Marie Babos, daughter of United States Army, World War II Veteran, Cape Coral Fire Department, Cape Coral Police Department, Lee County Sheriff's Office, Boy Scout Troops, and Cub Scout Pack, Knights of Columbus Council Assembly 2115, just to name a few. We will have a ceremonial flyover to begin, courtesy of the Lee County Mosquito Control, and a motorcycle ride-in by the American Legion Riders and Patriot Guard Riders. As a local business that employs veterans and family members of veterans, we feel a much greater responsibility to honor the true heroes that have given the ultimate sacrifice for our amazing country and to assist their families through difficult times. To us, every day is Memorial Day. Let us honor these true heroes. On behalf of our family at Coral Ridge Funeral Home and Cemetery, we wish to officially invite you, your family, friends, and the entire community, community to join our 42nd Annual Memorial Day Services honoring, honoring our fallen heroes. On May, I'm sorry, on Monday, 29 May, beginning at 10 a.m., the ceremony will last less than an hour with refreshments to follow in our new contemporary funeral home. Please join us. I have flyers out in the entryway with our address, phone number, and additional information. Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Anyone else wishing to speak to one's citizens' input, please come forward. Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Just one thing I want to mention, Mr. Warren, I appreciate you coming in today. In our community, if you hadn't had the opportunity to attend this, this event, I promise you it's worth the ride. And I would invite everyone to come out for a, a great event. Mr. Warren, his family's been putting this particular event on for 42 years, and it's an exceptional event, and it is definitely worth coming to. So thank you for what you do, Mr. Warren. Okay, we will move on since I don't see any other discussion. 9A is, item 9 is business. 9A is the consent agenda. I will open up the consent agenda for council to pull any items. If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costa.
Aye.
Eight Eyes, motion carried.
Okay, item 9B is appointments to boards and committee. B1 is for us to nominate a recommendation for a voting delegate on the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors. Each year, we have to notify Florida League of Cities by June 1st, and their board will vote on exactly who that delegate will be. Our city will make a recommendation to the board. I've been on that board for the last several years and, and would continue that if his council desires. And we will need a, a motion for whomever that we decide to put in that position.
I'll make a motion to continue with Mayor Gunter in the position as a voting delegate to Florida League of Cities Board of Directors. Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Gunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Costa.
Aye.
Eight Eyes, motion carried.
Okay, 9C1, we remove from the agenda. 9D, new business. We do not have any listed. 9E, we do not have any personnel actions listed, and we do not have any petitions to council. 9G, follow-up items from city management. G1, Hurricane Ian recovery update. G1, Hurricane Ian recovery update. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We're gonna have staff present some items.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director. We're still making progress with FEMA on inspecting some of our properties. I believe they're at the North RO Plant over the last two days, reviewing that property. So, we are still making continued strides in our recovery efforts, and we'll be back next week at the Cow Meeting to present on the CDBGDR. We do have an update on the Yacht Club for you tonight, so we'll go there.
Thank you. Paul Klingon, Director of Capitol Improvements. Yacht Club for the Boathouse, we were there Monday. Still hoping that they'll open end of May, but that might go into June. Public Works and Parks were down there on Monday when we met, and they'll be making sure before the opening that vehicle parking is ready, the lighting is ready, the temporary fencing and signs are up. And as far as the boat gas, Public Works is taking a look at the tanks and supply lines, making sure they're ready. And the, the boathouse is responsible for the actual pumps, for the boat gas. Excuse me. As far as the boat ramp, that is still closed. We did talk to ACT Environmental last week, who's responsible for removing the abandoned and derelict boats, and there was a question last week. So, to date, they've removed about 300 vessels from Lee County, of which 89 were from Cape Coral. So, they still anticipate needing the boat ramp until August 31st. We'll certainly be checking with them each month to see how that's going. The boat ramp also is being used by Lee County for repair of navigation aids. As far as the beach, that is still closed. As far as sand refurbishment, we're waiting for FEMA approval. They still have to send out a beach inspector, is actually a specialist that comes out related to beaches, and to see if we're eligible for reimbursement. The marina's still closed, and the other amenities. Demolition of the existing buildings, and again, this is for FEMA reimbursement. So, it has been determined that we can use Kimley and Horn to put a bid package together that would go out to bid, and for demolition, hopefully starting sometime in September, October. In between, or before the demolition, there's been discussion about having like a charity auction for some of the ballroom materials in there. If there's any interest in that, the details on that are still to be worked out. As far as the waterside phase, installation of seawalls, boat ramp, mariner, and the culvert, that culvert, again, is from the marina to the canal north of it for water circulation and water quality. Still waiting on the permits from the Army Corps and DUP. And then, as far as the landside phase, we have received a scope for, for a master plan from Kimley Horn, and we're reviewing that scope and fee. And the plan is to bring that to council before hiatus on June 14th for review and approval. That's all I have for the Yacht Club.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kling? Thank you, Mr. Kling.
Okay. That's all the updates we have for tonight. If there's any questions as far as hurricane recovery.
Any questions for Chief Lamb? Okay, thank you, Chief. Next item on the agenda, G2, is permitting process update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matthew Granbo, Special Projects Coordinator. Couple topics to discuss tonight regarding permitting. Firstly, several of our staff members last week, from Sunday through Wednesday, attended the annual Tyler Connect Conference. This is an annual conference that's hosted by the developers of EnerGov Tyler Technologies. We had, I think, five or six staff members attend, and it's a really good opportunity for us to have one-on-one meetings with the developers of EnerGov and other Tyler products. There was opportunity to discuss ongoing issues, some upcoming features that will be released in upcoming versions of the EnerGov software, and then also an opportunity for our representatives at the conference to communicate some questions that we had compiled over the last couple of weeks from our staff members, and to get answers from Tyler's staff directly, face-to-face in person. It's also a great opportunity for our staff members to network with our EnerGov clients and look at opportunities on the configuration side of things for us to address some of the issues that multiple municipalities and permit issuing agencies have discovered and are working through with their EnerGov platforms. So, very good experience last week for several members of our team, and it was very valuable. We were able to utilize some complimentary conference passes that we received from Tyler based on how the last year or so has gone. Going on to our updates on some of, several of our current initiatives, we are currently doing some final testing for a set of, of new permit types. These, about three different permits that are currently in the system are going to be reconfigured into six new permit types in the EnerGov system. We're hoping to launch these the week of Memorial Day, week of May 29th. The major changes are splitting our enclosure fence screen permit into a dedicated BLD fence and BLD screen enclosure permit. The BLD fence permit, it's important to note, is only for new fences. The fence repairs and replacements are push-button permits that are issued automatically by the, by the system. So, this will only involve permits for brand-new fences. This is a highly requested breakout to expedite our new fence permits, especially for new single-family residences that have a pool, and fence complies as a substantial barrier for those pools. So, this should expedite all of our new fence permits by separating it and streamlining the permit to only the reviews that are absolutely required specific to new fences. We're also splitting our concrete permit type into structural concrete and nonstructural concrete. This is to comply with the state's statutory preemption of local licensing to ensure that the project and the work that is being reviewed is very, very specific to the contractor license that's required to apply for that permit. And then, we're doing something similar with our marine improvement permits, splitting out the boat canopy permits. So, all of these should be going live right now, scheduled to be the week of Memorial Day. We're doing final testing, and of course, we'll be communicating any change and precisely when the change will be going live to our partners at the CCCIA and the Lead IA. Other initiatives to broaden update this evening, we have completed our streamlining of our private provider registration process. It's a new process that is only a one-time registration. That includes the review of a private provider registration form, the DBPR licenses associated with the license holder, and then a new requirement, which is a notarized private provider compliance affidavit. What this new affidavit, which we worked very hard with our city attorney's office to develop, replaces the requirement to review specific license insurance, resume, and affidavit information for the duly authorized representatives underneath the principle of the private provider. And so, this really removes a lot of administrative burden for our staff and for the staff of the private provider firms, but all other private provider requirements, including the requirement that all inspections related to the permit, if a private provider is utilized for plans review, the private provider continues to have to complete those inspections after they complete the, the plan review. So, this is a, a great change for us. It went live a couple of weeks ago. We've received very positive feedback. We have about 31 private providers registered with the city, and about half have already applied for the new process with the compliance affidavit. So, this is a time savings initiative on both our end and the private provider end, and we've really received some good feedback so far on the efficiencies that it's provided. And then, finally, this evening, consistent with our discussion on private providers, we are in final negotiations with a private provider firm to assist with the city's plan reviews. So, this agreement, tentatively scheduled for one of the regular meetings before hiatus, right now on the 7th of June, will provide the city with two to three additional dedicated private providers, and that will really help us to increase our capacity to manage all the plan reviews that are necessary with the surge and the historic volume of permit applications coming into the city. So, that's really encouraging. I think we have six or seven open plans to examine or positions that we're working to fill. So, having this additional capacity, this additional time internally is really gonna be a good thing for us and allow us to keep on track of all of the permit volume and to expedite our permit review and application turnaround times. So, with that, I'm available for any questions, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any questions from that? Appreciate the update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, 9G3, state legislative update. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mo, are you gonna present, or is it Nick or somebody? Nick's on the, Nick's on the.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Could you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, sir. We got you.
Fine. I apologize for why that appears so dark at the moment, but Mayor Gunter, members of the council, thank you again for letting me zoom in and provide kind of a quick update of kind of where we are in the whole legislative process. As a reminder, this session has convened. Kind of at the high level, still Senate Bill 25 Hocknurd, which is the appropriations Act, has not been transmitted to the governor, so he legally can't take action on it yet. We assume that is something in the next week or two that we'll, we'll see here, but again, it's, it's not on his desk for approval yet. That does not mean they are not vetting all the projects and going through, trying to find which projects make sense to, to veto. And I want to thank the, the mayor and your team for quickly, you know, rallying and getting some letters with some really good information up to the governor's office to, to make, continue to make the case for why some of our projects are some really good projects. So, we will keep you updated, you know, as soon as the budget gets to the governor, we'll make sure you're aware of that, and kind of as that plays out, we'll keep you posted on that. From a legislative side, just some, some, again, kind of a high-level thing, the, the ethics bill that will require candidates, the, to use the Form 6, that was signed by the governor, the Affordable Housing Bill, Senate Bill 102 has been signed by the governor. Most of, some of the other really heavy stuff is still waiting for the governor's signature or hasn't been transmitted to the governor yet. You know, one of those bills is Senate Bill 250, which is a, you know, titled Natural Emergencies, and was sponsored by some members of our, of the Southwest Florida delegation, and it was designed to really kind of streamline some things with respect to responding to emergencies and, you know, specifically hurricanes, and just kind of at a high level that, you know, this bill has not been signed by the governor yet, but it is something that we're gonna want to be aware of. It, this is the bill that makes it so that you can't prohibit a temporary residential structure on the property for a certain amount of time following a natural emergency. It authorizes local governments to have specialized building inspection teams following natural disasters, and allows you to have interlocal agreements, to, to have building inspection services with, I guess you could use other, other levels of government, interlocal agreement. It requires local governments to expedite certain issuance of certain permits following a natural disaster, and additionally in there, there, there's some, some language on moratoriums on creating more restrictive land use regulations since the last hurricane, but that is, that bill's covered in, and actually in our legislative report, that, a pretty, pretty comprehensive report that we've submitted this afternoon, and it details all the provisions of that bill, and, and we are happy to get with you or your staff, you know, if we need to do briefings or kind of one-on-ones to, to understand that bill, happy to do so. But again, we're, we're kind of still waiting on budget stuff. That's really the, the big looming thing for, for what it's worth. You, I don't know if you saw today, a, a pretty significant majority of the majority party in the Florida Legislature endorsed the governor, so I think that continues what has been a really good working relationship between the governor's office and the legislature, and, and that, I hope, is relevant when it comes to veto time, kind of selfishly. So, that, that's all I got for you now, Mayor.
Thank you, Nick. I appreciate all your hard work, as always. Any questions for Nick? Mr. City Manager, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you are aware of that Senate Bill 250. There's, there's some significant language in there that impacts some, some major initiatives that you all have advanced in the last 60 to 90 days. If it's signed by the governor, it will wipe out the burst on Burnsthor, it will wipe out the moratorium, and any other legislation that we were contemplating proposing to exert local control over our city will be blocked for essentially another year. So, if it is the will of council, if you take a look at that, maybe tonight is not the time, but possibly this week, it might be in, in your interest in light of all the actions you've taken to send a letter to the governor's office requesting a veto. It's my recommendation.
Okay.
But additionally, you should know it was also sponsored by our local delegate, Mike G. Lombardo. So, he had a, a reason. I think there's some unintended consequences here that we got caught up in, but maybe you might want to have us speak with him first before.
Our office is also looking into it. We were actually on a webinar today regarding this, well, regarding some legislative changes. They talked about this a little bit, not as much as we wanted to. We're gonna contact the Florida League of Cities to see what the actual legislative intent is pertaining to one section of the bill. So, we're, we're looking into it too, and we'll get back with y'all.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you for the update, and I guess.
Thank you, sir.
We'll, we'll keep an eye on, that was Senate Bill 250 or 260?
250.
Okay, item 10 is ordinances and Resolution 10A, or quasi-judicial public hearings, the first one of which is Ordinance 36-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 36-23, an ordinance amending ordinance 69-06 as amended by ordinance 1-11, which approved a planned development project in the city of Cape Coral, Florida, entitled South Santa Barbara Plaza, on property described as lots 1 through 6 and lots 87 through 96, block 1842, Cape Coral subdivision, unit 45, part 1, as more particularly described herein. Property located at 3032 through 3108 Santa Barbara Boulevard and 3103 through 3113 Southwest Santa Barbara Place. Approving the removal of property described as lots 5 through 6, block 1842, Cape Coral subdivision, unit 45, part 1, as more particularly described herein, from the planned development project, providing for findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for action on request and conditions of approval, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Struvi.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members. For the record, Mike Struvi, Planning Team Coordinator with the Planning Division. My credentials are in file with the city clerk's office. This ordinance before you involves a PDP amendment, and the purpose of this amendment is to eliminate or contract one property from the South Santa Barbara Plaza PDP. This amendment was filed by the property owner, Reviving Homes Incorporated, and involves one site along Southwest Santa Barbara Place. This is an aerial map that shows the South Santa Barbara Plaza project. The parcels for them, they're outlined in red, comprise the project area, and along Santa Barbara, you see the largest of the four sites, which contains two commercial multi-tenant buildings. And then, to the west of that commercial shopping center, you see three smaller properties. Those are all residential properties, two are developed with duplexes. The property that is shaded is vacant and is subject to this PDP amendment. So, this is the property that is proposed to be withdrawn or, or removed from the project This particular property has RML zoning, as do most properties to the north and to the east. The shopping center has C zoning to the west and to the south, single-family zoning indicated in yellow, and then there is a, a small amount of P-zone properties indicated in the light blue to the south of the shopping center. Some background on the South Santa Barbara Plaza project that was approved in 2006 and then amended in 2011. And in 2011, the developer added these three properties, these located to the west of the shopping center. At that time, all four properties were under single ownership. After that PDP amendment was approved in 2011, those smaller sites began to be sold off to other property owners. In 2017, lots 1 to 4 were sold to one entity. Two years later, in 2019, lots 5 and In 2017, lots 1 to 4 were sold to one entity. Two years later, in 2019, lots 5 and 6 were sold to Reviving Homes LLC. In 2022, the city amended the future land use classification of lots 1 through 6 from the commercial professional to the multifamily future land use classification, then followed that up just earlier this year with rezoning those six lots to the RML zoning district. Again, the owner's requesting to remove this one single site consisting of lots 5 and 6 from the PDP area. The owner agrees in filing this application to relinquish any entitlements previously granted by PDP, except they will retain their existing zoning and a future or a past vacation request will also remain effectuated. The owner also agrees, should he develop to, should he decide to develop the site in the future, to seek new entitlements under the existing land development code. Staff's analyzed this request based on Section 3.4.8 of the Land Development Code. This application complies with all standards appearing in that subsection, which includes an ownership criterion, Reviving Homes being the sole owner of the property requested to be removed. Staff finds that removing lots 5 and 6 from the PDP will not negatively affect other areas within the project, nor will it adversely affect any other surrounding properties. Furthermore, removing lots 5 and 6 from this project will not burden other owners within the PDP with any remaining conditions that they might have to unfairly be shouldered with moving forward. Staff recommends approval of this request. The hearing examiner did review this case on March 21 and recommended approval. There were no speakers at public hearing. We have received previously two phone calls, both from individuals wanting more information about this case, and I'll stand by in case you have questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 36 dash 23? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Michael Faulkner. I'm a representative for the owner. First, I just want to thank Mr. Struvi for the presentation. And as he stated, this was approved by the planning staff and the hearing examiner previously. And I'm just here to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 36 dash 23? Okay, seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 36 dash 23?
Motion to approve ordinance 36 23.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 40 dash 23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 40 dash 23, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the city of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 1 through 6 and 9 through 10 and 15 through 20, block 1006, unit 24, Cape Coral subdivision, from commercial to residential multifamily low zone. Property is located at 1342 through 1348, 1402, 1414 through 1416, and 1502 through 1512 Southeast First Place, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. This is a quasi judicial hearing. Also, anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. For the record, Candace Ford, Associate Planner with the City Planning Division. I will be speaking to you about ordinance 40 dash 23. This is a city-initiated rezone application. It was previously, the, I should say, the future land use was previously amended, and this is the follow-up rezone to align those two. They are located west of Santa Barbara Boulevard and south of Nicholas Parkway. As mentioned, there are multiple parcels with multiple different owners. The city is requesting to rezone from commercial to residential multifamily low for seven of the sites in that block. And as mentioned, the future land use classification was amended by ordinance 78 21. There are seven sites, and they are currently between 10,000 to 13,304 square feet. Five of them currently have duplexes. Two of them are currently vacant with the assumption that they will be more residential uses in the future. The subject parcels currently have frontage along Southeast First Place to the east and are adjacent to the 20-foot unimproved alley to the west. Surrounding uses in the area do include other duplexes, single-family residences, and there is an assisted living center facility to the north and to the west of that. In 2011, the subject parcels were rezoned from R3 to C1 by ordinance 16 dash 11. And as previously mentioned, the future land use was amended recently from ordinance 78 dash 21. The subject parcels are highlighted in red, and the 500-foot buffer is for the mailing buffer for all the residents that received notifications. The official zoning is going to be on the left of the screen, and the proposed zoning, or the future land use, I'm sorry, is on the right of the screen. The summary for this is going to be that all six of the criteria contained within the LDC for Section 3.4.6 for the rezone were met. And this will align the consist, and provide consistency between the proposed zoning and then the future land use classification. The fire department and the police department were both contacted, and they both expected minimal, or minimal services to be expected from the rezone. This will provide consistency with the comp plan because it will now align. And then the multifamily residential rezone would allow for 16 dwelling units per acre or less, and it would be consistent with that as well. Planning staff is recommending approval. The hearing examiner did recommend approval at the time of the rezone, and I did not receive any correspondence from any neighbors. And I will stand by for any questions you have.
Thank you. I'll now open up public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on 40 dash 23? Please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 40 dash 23?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance 41 dash 23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 41 dash 23, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the city of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29, block 1548 Cape Coral, unit 17, and lot 15, Southwind Commercial Center, from industrial to institutional zone. Property is located at 2025 Northeast 6th Street and 671 Stonecrest Lane, providing severability and an effective date.
This also is a quasi judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony need to be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. For the record, Anthony Santor, Associate Planner, Cape Coral City Planning. I'm here today to talk to you about ordinance 41 23, also known as Rezone 23 02. So this is a city-initiated rezoning for a piece of city-owned property. The addresses are for 2025 Northeast 6th Street and 671 Stonecrest Lane. This is right along Northeast 6th Street and just south of Pondello Drive, roughly 51,500 square feet and in our urban services infill area. The request we have today is for changing the zoning from industrial to institutional use to coincide with the construction of Fire Station 13 on the property. So as specified, this is for two parcels. They are currently vacant and undeveloped. The site does have access to all of our utilities, including water, sewer, and irrigation. For a little bit of zoning history, the site used to be R3. It was converted to commercial corridor in 2010 and then to industrial in 2019. For the future land use, it started out as commercial professional, was changed to the Pine Island Road District. It was again amended in 2019 to industrial. And then just recently, at the beginning of this year, council did hear the future land use case to change from the industrial use to the public facilities used through ordinance 323, which was approved. So again, this is just to coordinate the zoning with the construction of the fire station. Here we can see the location of the properties outlined in red, right at the intersection of Stonecrest and Northeast 6th Street. We see mainly industrial developments to the north, east, and west, and duplexes right along Northeast 6th Street to the south. Here we see the current zoning for the property, which is industrial, and the surrounding industrial to the northeast and west, and the RML district, which is our residential multifamily low to the south. What we're requesting is to take those two properties from the industrial to the institutional class, which would allow for the fire station. We reviewed this rezone along with the requirements of the land development codes, specifically Section 3.4.6.1, where we examined whether or not the proposed zoning district is consistent with the comprehensive plan, which it is, and we will see specific items a little bit later in the presentation. We also examined whether the full range of uses allowed in the proposed zoning district will be compatible with the existing uses in the area under consideration, and staff found that they are, it is consistent with that criteria as well. We also examined whether the range of uses allowed in the proposed zoning district will be compatible with the existing uses in the area under construction, under consideration, excuse me. And staff did find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with that criteria. We also examined whether the proposed zoning district will serve a community need or broader public service. We found that it was consistent. Obviously, it's a fire station. It's going to be serving a very prominent public and community need. We also examined whether the characteristics of the proposed rezone area are suitable for the uses permitted in the proposed zoning district. They were, and we found it consistent with that criteria. And we examined whether zoning district, other than district requested, will create fewer potential adverse impacts to the existing uses in the surrounding area. And we found that the proposal is the most consistent and highest and best use for these pieces of property, so therefore we found it consistent. We also noticed for the comprehensive plan, we found that Chapter 1 of the capital element, capital improvement element goal, that the proposed rezone is consistent with this section, as well as with Chapter 4 Policy 1.5, that the proposed rezone is consistent with the goals indicated in that policy. We also found that for Chapter 4 Policy 4.1, the proposed rezone is consistent with that as well. Fire and police did weigh in on this. They, fire department, found that the area would have minor impact with no negative effects on service delivery, and that there would be a large positive impact effects on service delivery for the northeast section of the city. Police found that the proposed development will have a slightly negative impact on the service demand anticipated with a potential reduction in police calls for service in the area over the long term. So city, city staff's recommendation is approval for the rezone. This was heard by the hearing examiner at a public hearing on 4/4/2023, where she recommended approval as well. City, city staff has not received any correspondence in regards to this case to date. And with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll now open up public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 41 dash 23? Please, please come forward. Seeing none. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 41 dash 23?
Motion to approve.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinke?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item 10B is legislative public hearings, ordinance 42 dash 23. Three. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 42 dash 23, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement for lease and management of the Cape Coral Historical Society Museum between the city of Cape Coral and the Cape Coral Historical Society, Inc., a Florida not-for-profit corporation, for the lease of a portion of property owned by the city of Cape Coral, property located within block 1139, unit 23, Cape Coral, Florida, terminating the existing lease agreement between the city of Cape Coral and the Cape Coral Historical Society, Inc., dated October 3, 1983, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members. Dawn Andrews with the Real Estate Property Management Division of the Public Works Department. This ordinance is to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Cape Coral Historical Society for the lease and management of the Cape Coral Historical Society Museum. The city owns block 1139, unit 23, the location of the new Go-Bond Park, called Cultural Park, and the location of the museum, the Cultural Park Theater, and the Cape Coral Art League. In 1983, the city entered into a 49-year lease agreement with the Cape Coral Historical Society for a portion of block 1139. This agreement amends the land area due to the new park and provides clarification as to the maintenance and management responsibilities. The museum will be responsible for repairs up to $5,000, and any repairs in excess of $5,000 will be paid for by the city. The initial term of the lease is for 10 years with three five-year renewals, and I'll stand by for questions.
Thank you. I will now open up public input. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 42 dash 23? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gloria Tate, and I am the current president of the Museum of History of Cape Coral. And I have with me tonight Janelle Troll, the executive director, and Chuck Warren, who is the vice president, and he will be president in 2024. We'd like to take this opportunity to thank the city manager, the city attorney, and Ms. Andrews for all the work that they've done to prepare this lease. As you know, it's been a long time since we have had a lease. And the city has been gracious to help us with different repairs and different situations that have come up. But it's time to really solidify and make sure that we're all protected. The city is protected, and the museum is protected, along with all the artifacts that we have. So we really are excited about having this opportunity. The one difference in the lease that you currently have in front of you, and what the city manager has discussed with all of you, I believe, is to add in a cost of living expense. And if you remember last year when I was on council, it was a pretty good fight to get up to $60,000 from the $45,000. And this council graciously agreed to move forward with that. So we really do need to add in that language, and I believe that the city manager will discuss that. But I wanted to thank you in advance and hope that you will support the museum. Remember, the actual building is the first pro shop from the Cape Coral Golf and Tennis Club when you enter the building. And I will leave it up to Chuck and Janelle.
Thank you, Council. I want to reiterate what Gloria had mentioned. This is a very important endeavor, and I really appreciate all your support and the city manager's language and, and Mrs. Andrews' hard work on getting us to where we need to be to protect everything because history matters.
Thank you very much, Council and Mayor. I just wanted to add that one of the reasons we were pushing for the agreement is simply because we have not had anything official, aside from the lease, with the city. And we have built over the years two additional buildings which are on that property. And in 2009, we actually turned all of our properties over that were built to the city. So the city physically owns the buildings. We just never had an agreement between the city and the museum for who took care of what. And as Gloria mentioned, everybody has been really gracious and kind. And if we asked, you know, you delivered. But we wanted to make sure we had it in writing so that as we move forward and as things like, you know, hurricanes and other things come forward, we have an actual agreement on, on what can be done and how those things can continue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 42 dash 23? Please come forward. Seeing none. Public input is now closed. We have a motion for ordinance 42 dash 23.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, I see your light.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to, I did speak with you all individually- I did want to, I did speak with you all individually, but I do want to discuss with you some elements of this lease and request a small modification to it. The previous lease that was on file from nineteen eighty-three essentially was just a land lease. It allowed them a portion of area at Cultural Park to operate within, when we were designing Cultural Park, the museum had expressed some concerns and wants to add another building and kind of grow the footprint and continue to bring in artifacts and things to preserve for the city's future. So we worked designing that park to ensure that there was room for them for future growth. It became necessary then to amend the lease. We were asked, well, at the time I was in Public Works, we were asked to basically revise the legal description to incorporate the area on the land to include where they might eventually expand to. Having said that, the lease at the time, again, was only a land lease, but the city, year over year, was budgeting discretionary funding to support the operation and maintenance of the museum itself. But we did not have any language, any agreement on who was responsible for what, and we didn't have a, basically, a management agreement with the museum. And that's where I want to tie into the request and the small modification to the lease that I'm about to ask for. If we were to have a management agreement with a for-profit company, or if the city itself was running this, we would expect that there would be normal and regular increases in the budget to accommodate, you know, cost of living increases, inflation, and just the cost of doing business. What's proposed before you in the lease that was drafted is basically setting a fixed number and holding it in throughout the duration or the term of the agreement. If we're going to have a beneficial partnership with, with the historical society at the museum, I believe that we should have a small inflation put on that number that we can, management, and could budget for. But in addition to that, if we, if we look at the responsibility of the lessee to fix items five thousand dollars and less, if that number itself also is not indexed in the future, what happens as the, as costs increase to perform and procure goods and services, over time, we're shifting more liability to the city. So my recommendation to city council would be to make a small modification to both the maintenance and repair section and the amount that we have in here for the, the management portion to have some type of cost of living increase. That would be at your discretion, could be booked to some type of CPI, or it could be a fixed number that, of your choosing. And that would be my recommendation so that management and our lessee know what money to budget in their future, and they also know what expenses they're going to be responsible as the cost of goods and services increase. Thank you.
And I didn't hear in your comment what that escalator would be, unless I missed it.
Well, I mean, we could, we could put it, we could base it to a CPI index, if you would like. This way, if there is a recession, it would be none. You could put in a flat number to three percent, four percent. I just think that there should be some recognition of the cost of goods and services over time increased in both the management aspect as well as their responsibility for maintenance. So I could recommend either a fixed fee or CPI-based index.
Thank you. I guess I'll start out real quick in reviewing the lease that was in effect since October third, nineteen eighty-three. Like it was mentioned, it's, you know, basically a land lease. That lease was for forty-nine years, for a dollar a year rent for the property. The property was identified in the nineteen eighty-three lease as one point four eight seven acres. The new ordinance here, forty-two dash twenty-three, identifies the property, again, for a portion of the property located within block eleven thirty-nine, unit twenty-three, and in the lease, it is identified as point eight nine three six acres. So it has been reduced from the nineteen eighty-three lease to the present proposed lease. Some of the problems that I had initially in the, in the lease, when you read both of these leases, and I'm not an attorney by, by any stretch of the imagination, but when I read these two leases, both of them, to me, appear to be land leases, because it only identifies the property. There's no mention of any structures that are, that are on that particular property. So if, you know, when you're talking about repairs, what repairs are you talking about? Is it repairs of the property, repairs of the structures, or a structure, or is it a combination of both? You know, I also reviewed the present theater lease and the proposed theater lease that will be coming to us in a couple of weeks, ordinance forty-nine dash twenty-three, and there's some differences in those two leases. For me, I think if we're going to have this type of an approach as a, a management-style approach to, to both of these facilities, there should be some similarities between the two. You know, they're both on city property. You have the theater that we've allocated in the pre, in the existing lease and the proposed lease of thirty-five thousand dollars annually. In the museum, the number is forty-five thousand dollars annually, so there is a difference there. In the new proposed ordinance for the theater, there is a built-in escalator of three percent. So I think if we're going to consider an escalator, we do both facilities the same. If you'd look back, and I had requested from Mr. Mason, the monies that we've given both the Historical Society and the Cultural Park from present back to two thousand and nine, I'm assured that they sent that to, to all of council. Basically, the, the theater was getting thirty-five thousand dollars a year until this budget cycle, and like Ms. Tate had identified, we had given a one-time lump sum for additional funding this year's budget. So the theater got a total of sixty thousand, and Historic Society got a total of sixty thousand. The Historic Society prior to that, since two thousand and seventeen, had been annually receiving forty-five thousand dollars. Some of the issues that I have in the lease, you know, it's fairly clear what we are supposed to do at the city. Some clarity that I need is the five thousand dollar maintenance. The way I read the lease, if the repair is forty-nine thousand ninety-nine dollars, it's the responsibility of the tenant, the Historic Society, to make those repairs. If it's five thousand dollars or greater, it's our responsibility. So my question is, I'm just kind of curious why we didn't structure that any repair up to five thousand, they would be responsible, and any dollar amount over and above that, then we would be responsible for the difference. Because the way I read the lease is, we're, we're responsible, everything over the five thousand. So my first question would be, is that an accurate statement as far as if the repair is five thousand and one dollars, we're responsible for five thousand and one dollar, or are we only responsible for one dollar?
I was not involved in this because I was a prior board member, so I'll have Mr. Nocleario go up there and talk. I, I recused myself a couple of years ago from having anything to do with this lease.
Okay.
Yeah, the intent of this, and this was discussed with real property and the applicant, the applicant, or the museum folks, they could come up and verify it on the record as well, but the intent is the city pays for repairs over five thousand, so if it was a five thousand and one dollar repair, the city would be responsible for one dollar, or maybe two dollars, but they would pay everything up to the five thousand, we would pay over the five thousand.
Was that the understanding? That was, was?
I.
You talk. Okay, well then.
That's the way I read, that's the way that I read the ordinance in front of us, is that we are responsible for anything above five thousand dollars, but there's no breakdown that they are responsible up to that point. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I had some of those same clarification questions. When the initial lease came to us, I had redlined some items and asked a lot of those questions, and essentially what was told to me was if something was five thousand dollars or five thousand and one dollars, well, that's it, it's the city's problem, it's not ours. So if that's not the case, that was not the understanding we had, so.
Okay. So that's how I read the, that's how I read the lease of, as a, as a layman and not an attorney, is, is that it appears that anything above five thousand, it's solely our responsibility.
That was the intent in my working on the document.
Okay. So I think there's some clarity that, that needs to be at least identified in the lease. Some of the other problems that I have in the lease, you know, there's a defined requirement for what the city is responsible for, but as far as if we're going to do it as a management style approach, for them running the Historical Society, I'm good with that, but there's no hours of operation, where's the management plan, what are they providing? Because the way I read the lease now, we sign on the dotted line, we give them forty-five thousand dollars, there's no expectation from them, zero. There's nothing outlined, other than they're going to run it.
Correct, and that's been the relationship for the last twenty-something years.
So for me, you have to have that defined. If you're going to have a management plan approach, then there needs to be a management plan, and I don't see that listed within the lease. What's the expectation? Hours of operations? How many days are they going to be open? Are they only open two hours a day? Or they only open two hours a week? You know, so some of those things, for me, have to be identified. It's just way too broad. I know we've been doing it this way forever, but if we're going to enter into a new lease, I'm okay with that. The other lease that we had, we still have nine, nine more years. I guess what kind of precipitated this is the new park, and we've reduced the footprint that.
The legal description's inaccurate. That's what generated this whole thing.
Exactly. But I think if we're going to go down this path and we are going to open the door, let's open the door, dot our i's, cross our t's, for both parties. They need the expectation as much as we do, but if we don't put it in the lease, it's not going to do any of us any good, and we'll probably have a problem later. So the current condition, I can't support for the reasons that I stated. Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. Yeah, I saw the same things. I did have a couple of questions. I just want to make sure so, so all of us are on the same page, pardon the pun, because we're going to the pages, but it appears that we're talking about section C, item two, which is on page two, as it relates to adding some type of an annual adjustment to that.
That is one section that we would have the cost of living, correct?
As far as some type of an index there, that over the course of the ten years, that there'd be an adjustment allowed for compensation for the duties, that like the mayor said, should be outlined in here. This is what you're responsible for doing, this was, with the forty-five thousand dollars is for, and we understand that over time that needs to go up, and so, to find something. So that fill-in-the-blank would have to be identified. I'm not so sure that, I would think that the theater lease and the museum lease should necessarily be identical. I've not seen the budgets of, of those two entities, and so looking at the budget and the revenue capacity of one versus the revenue capacity of another, and what they can or they can't afford to fix, maintain, so on and so forth, each one of those entities may be very different in, in potential expenses, potential repairs and maintenance, as well as potential revenue on whatever revenue streams they have. So I don't, I don't necessarily think that they have to be the same, but I do think that consideration needs to be given for both indexing, the, the remuneration for their services in running it, but then also indexing in the responsibility for amounts covered by the city versus, versus the entity. And I, and I wouldn't be comfortable until we do all those things, approving a lease for either one of, of the two entities.
And real quickly, just on your comment, Councilmember Steinke, in the, there is a financial terms clause in the.
D one and four?
No, you probably haven't seen it yet. In the, in the proposed theater, it goes on to talk about, it's in section C six, where it talks about fifty percent of the net income and where, where that, so there is a, an income clause in the lease for, the proposed lease for the theater, where this particular lease does not have it, but I would assume that the theater has a much more of an opportunity to raise funds than, than the Historic Society can.
Right, and that's my point. I don't know, they need to be identical, both on the revenue side and the expense side, but at the expense side in this lease is section D, item one and four, would appear that we need other verbiage in there as it relates to any indexing, I would think.
Councilmember Hayden?
Yeah, I'm also on the board as a volunteer. Clearly, there's some, and again, I had mentioned this a few weeks ago when we're trying to discuss and change, change an ordinance on the fly. This one clearly isn't ready to move forward yet. Some things to understand about the Historical Society and what they do as a volunteer nonprofit organization. They have several fundraising events, including one that's coming up, so if you think forty-five thousand dollars is going to come close to covering any operational costs, think again. So they have to do the fundraising efforts to do things. I certainly don't want to get in the business of managing this nonprofit by discussing their hours of operation, or what's, what exhibits they're showing, or whatever, or whatever. If you want a detailed look at where that forty-five thousand dollars or any CPI increase might go, but that has nothing to do with the hours of operation or the exhibits they put on. I'm going to withdraw my motion. I hope the second agrees, because I don't want to take a vote on something that clearly isn't ready yet, but I think as a council, we have to define what we, what our expectations are as we move forward with any type of lease. You know, if the city wants to take over running the museum, great, let's have that conversation, and I certainly don't want to be putting in an ordinance dictating terms of what we think they should or should not do, when most of us have no idea what's occurring inside that museum in terms of an operational standpoint. So I guarantee you, these volunteers, except for Janelle, who's a, a paid employer working their tails off, to try and manage and make this thing, make this thing work in very old buildings, as Gloria said, you know, this was the original pro shop from a golf club that opened in the nineteen sixties. So they're in constant need of repair there, and, you know, that's why fundraising efforts are so important, and so, you know, any monies that might go towards them, you know, isn't going to come close to covering any of the costs, but at this point, I think we need to table it for a time until we get this lease worked out as well as the theater lease, so we understand a little bit more about what we're discussing, rather than trying to negotiate this from up here when there's more information that needs to be obtained. So I'm withdrawing my motion.
Thank you. Just for clarity, Councilmember Hayden, are you just a volunteer, or are you on the board?
As I said, I'm a volunteer member on the board.
On the board.
Correct.
So my question.
There, there's an exception for board members for five oh one C three nonprofit, where he can vote on this matter, if that's where you were going.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure.
I already checked into it.
All right, I appreciate.
As did I.
Councilmember Welsh?
Thank you. I have to agree with pretty much what everyone else in front of me said. I think we have an opportunity here where we can make. I think we have an opportunity here where we can make this lease in partnership with the Cape Coral Historical Museum, correct for the use to come. I don't want to rush into this. And seeing it the way that it is, I believe some of the questions were asked, is do we want to do a cost of living or a fixed amount? I think our salaries are adjusted on cost of living, so we should expect that across the board. So I would be in support of a... Some sort of cost of living increase with the amount of money that we give each year for the Historical Museum. It was also touched on about keeping it the same as the theater, as a historical museum. Together on that property, I do see them as two separate entities. I would be more in favor with the Historical Museum, being the fact that they don't have any sort of revenue generating things, to probably give them more money because of the... Like I said, the ability to get those funds there. A lot of it is by donation, but also... I'm trying to think where I was going to go with this. Yeah, so pretty much that. I think we need to review it and get it right the first time, not just rush into this because of the opportunity. So I'm in favor of doing all these things for the Historical Museum, but let's get it right. Thank you.
Councilmember Cummings.
Thank you. So everyone's kind of talking about the monies that's been coming through every year with the historical building. Do we have finance records on where the monies go per year, of the monies that's giving from the city?
Mr. Mayor, may I approach?
Sure.
Thank you for allowing us. And before we get into answering your question, by the end of this evening, we'd like to know how we would proceed and who would be on a committee that would work out all of these details, because the word "management" means that you're going to operate the museum, and you do not, at least to the best of our ability. And Janelle's salary is paid for by us and our fundraising efforts, so we need to make sure we understand when we leave here tonight, who is going to work to negotiate the lease, because we don't want staff to do it and then come back to you, and you will not be satisfied with it. So we need to make sure we clarify that. We do have budgets. We do have financials. They're available every month to our board members, and our hours of operation are listed on our website. We've spent an enormous amount of money just updating our website. So we have our management in place, and so I don't believe that those records are part of what this lease is or is intended to be, because you're not running the museum, we are. So... Does that answer your question? We do have budgets, and we do have financials, and we do plan every year.
The reason why I'm asking this, because if we... If the city is giving $45,000, I think it's transparency. People like to see where the money goes and how it's given out. So that's why I asked that question.
To... In order to get the money, I have to put in the budget for the year to show where our funds go. So you guys get that automatically before we even get the money. So the city has that.
So I... And don't take this the wrong way. I love history, so I'm all about history. I'm just trying to look at everything here, because everyone had some valid points up here on the dais. The other question I had to ask, too, is... So the city owns the land, and the building is owned by the city? Is that what it's called?
They are now. They were originally built by us. The one that we call the Rosen Building was bought in 1983 from the city. It was trekked over from Fort Freedoms Park to be placed where it is now, and we began operations of the museum in 1987. In 2002, we built a second building, because we had to expand. And then in 2009, at our own expense, we built 2002 and 2009. So after 2009, and I don't know exactly when this happened, but we gave all of the buildings back to the city. Now, what we didn't do is, at that time, create some sort of agreement for what you guys were responsible for and what we were. And that doesn't mean management of the space in terms of what we're doing every day, but physically, if the air conditioning breaks, is that our problem? Is it your problem? They're technically your buildings, but we're leasing them. So the expectation for today was to figure out who's taking care of what, in terms of the buildings only, not the management of the property. If you guys want to make me a city employee, you guys want to run that, you know, building, great, we can go down that path, but that wasn't what the expectation was with this. And we knew we had to increase the lease or change the lease due to the footprint we were expecting or hoping for with the changes in the property. Once the gobon came through, that's where sort of these discussions spiraled from. And then it was just the understanding that we have a 2002 building, which has a 2002 air conditioner, and air conditioning is absolutely essential for anything that sits inside that building for preservation purposes, and it breaks all the time, and you guys are out there fixing it. So it just became a conversation of, if that thing fully goes, is it our problem or is it yours? So that's where we started these conversations, and that's where this stemmed from. So it's a management of the property, but not the business.
And what do you pay for the lease per month?
We don't pay.
It's supposed to be a dollar.
Okay.
A dollar a year is what it's supposed to be.
That's pretty awesome. So didn't last year, they put a new roof on the building? What all was done last year?
A new roof. And that was done after the storm, but yes, it was in last year's budget. That was for one of our buildings. The other two buildings have now gotten new roofs because of damage due to Hurricane Ian.
And they're putting gutters on today, and they've done some ongoing maintenance. We had a security system breakdown that is still broken, because the city can't seem to get it fixed because of a part. So we're constantly going back and forth, but we don't really have a plan as to who is doing what. We've been closed more than we've been open for many reasons.
All right, thank you.
So Mayor, we just asked that you all would have a plan or let us know the plan to negotiate a new lease, and who would be on that committee and how we would work it.
Yeah, and I know we've got a few other speakers here. And the reason that I had made some of those accusations, because even if you're looking up in our backup material where it says summary, explanation, and background, and it says in there, "The city and the Historical Society desires to enter into a new agreement clarifying maintenance and management responsibilities." Clearly, there's a maintenance question already, because every...
Right.
I asked a question, everybody was pointing a finger at one another. And then "management responsibilities," there's no mention of that. So we can only go by the sentence that staff...
Correct. We understand that, but we never were intended to be managed by the city.
Okay.
So...
Councilmember Long.
Well, I guess before we spend any further time on this, I think we should talk about... She had mentioned the word committee. Should we talk about this in a committee the whole, or should we... Is it our intent to maybe talk about some of the issues here, come up with some sort of consensus, and then bring it back in this meeting? I mean, I don't want to spend time here, decide to cowl it, spend more time there, and then come back again and do this all over again.
Mr. City Manager.
My recommendation would be to let members of my office, members of parks, since this is in a park, and members of the city attorney's office, develop a term sheet, so that we can discuss the financials, you know, whether or not they have 990s, and you all want to copy them every year.
We do.
The management arrangement, you know, should it be open so many days a year? Should we... You know, not that they have to be open every single day, but is there some level of expectation? How they, you know, deal with the property, the parking, the cleanliness? Have some level of management agreement in there. Deal with the revenue side that we're going to be providing them. Develop a term sheet, and then we can bring that term sheet back before city council and a cowl. You all can review that term sheet, provide any general input, and then we'll take that term sheet and end up putting it into an actual lease. I'm going to continue to call it lease. We've leased Sun Splash, but it also has a management element and plan as part of it as well. That would be my recommendation.
Sure. So if we're going to cowl it, then I'll just reserve my comments for that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I think when Kimberly read the ordinance, that the ordinance authorizes and directs the mayor to enter into an agreement for lease and management. I would rather see that committee be the mayor enter into a discussion, into an agreement. I would rather see member of staff, the mayor, the chair of the board, which is now Gloria and Janelle, be part of that committee to discuss the terms, based on the reading of the ordinance. That would be my... You know, I don't know that it can come back before a cowl, but if we're going to get wrapped up into the same discussions without any direction from what the museum wants and what staff would like to see, then we're just going to continue to spin like we are right now. So I would rather see that committee established ahead of time with those members, rather than some sort of term sheet that comes back before a cowl and starts putting us in a position where we're defining the operation of the museum. To me, this lease is directed towards the maintenance and any capital costs that might be incurred from our perspective. To me, that's what the lease should spell out. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. City Manager.
Well, I think what we have before us is, we're considering, as well as the Historical Society, the museum, we are fundamentally changing the way that this has operated. If we don't want to define any parameters around the financials, and we don't want to enter into some management plan, then we don't have to do anything. They have an existing lease with nine years to go. But if we want to try to improve this and look forward for the next 10 or 20 years, my recommendation is that we work together to define those parameters, and then we bring them back to you all for consideration.
Councilmember Steinke.
Thank you. I think we're making this more complicated than we need to. I think that we have an item that required a motion. The motion's been withdrawn. If we don't have a motion in a second, we have nothing to discuss or vote on. So it's obvious that the consensus is, not a bad idea, we just got to fix a couple of things in it. So let's just get those things fixed, and let's bring it back. And so Gloria's concern is, okay, then who are we going to talk to? Why don't we just decide who they're going to talk to? Mayor, you had the main concerns. No one thought those were bad concerns to have, to make sure that everything is outlined. And so let's just commit to having a member of staff, and Mayor, you represent from the council, let's put it back on the drawing board and get it right.
That's what we thought would be the easiest. We'd have to have the mayor, since his concerns were the biggest, and he represents all of you. So that's what we are hoping for, a dialogue, and then we'll get it right, and then it won't waste your time.
I'm fine with that, as long as staff is. You know, I think we're all trying to achieve the same goal.
Yeah.
And I think some of the concerns that I brought up should have been your concerns as well, too.
That's why we're here, is because we have those concerns.
So I just think we, like Councilmember Steinke said, we just got to sit down, work out the details, make sure we dot our i's, cross our t's, so both parties know exactly what the expectation is.
Okay. So we'll look forward to communicating with you and City Manager and team, and let us know when you're ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And please come by the museum anytime if you guys have questions or have not seen the property.
Councilmember Long.
I think that's counterintuitive, the whole process, the discussion that we just had, because the mayor, just to clarify, does not represent all of us. We each have our own individual votes. So by you coordinating with the mayor himself, he might not be representing each and every one of our individual votes. So it would be time spent... I don't know that it would be time well spent if we don't all have the opportunity to provide our individual input.
Yep.
So you guys could talk all you'd like, but if you come back here, I'm going to have to... I may or may not have my own opinions on the matter. And I also have the same...
Why don't we do the term sheet? Term sheet, I think, is the best way.
That's the whole point of a cowl, as far as I'm concerned, but...
But she got it.
Just to be clear, I don't want to micromanage these people at all. It sounds like we should have just had a lease from the beginning. So if we want to have that discussion now, like I said, and what Councilmember Steinke was saying, let's have it. Otherwise, let's not waste everyone's time, and we'll have that discussion at another point in time.
Good. Councilmember... Or I got Mr. City Manager's light, and I'll go to Councilmember Hayden again.
I want to reassure the council that I'm going to speak with all of you before I meet with them. I will have all of your concerns with me when I go into the meeting. I gave you my recommendation. You're welcome to follow it. I would. It keeps you all out of the process, and I will bring you back a term sheet.
I'm okay with that.
You too.
All right. So that's how we'll move forward. You will have individual meetings with all of council. We will express our personal concerns. You'll have that information when you go to sit down with the Historic Society. And once you craft a term sheet, you're going to bring the term sheet back, and we'll have a discussion, make sure we're all okay with that, and then the lease will come back shortly thereafter.
Exactly.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Ordinance 43-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 43-23, an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a permissive use license agreement with Lee County Electric Cooperative, Inc., a Florida not-for-profit corporation, for the lease of property owned by the city of Cape Coral, being Block 2990B, Cape Coral, Unit 43, Cape Coral subdivision, as described herein, providing for severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Ms. Andrews, I think you're up again.
Yes, sir. Good evening again, Mayor, city council members. Ordinance 43-23 is requesting authorization and enter into a permissive use license agreement with Lee County Electric Cooperative for the temporary use of a portion of... Or for a property owned by the city of Cape Coral. LCEC is getting ready to start the Kismat Parkway Transmission Line project, and has requested permission to utilize the city's property located at the intersection of Nelson Boulevard and Kismat Parkway for the temporary storage of materials, vehicles, and equipment associated with the project. Standby for questions.
I'll now open up public input. Is anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 43-23? Please come forward. Seeing none, public input is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 43-23?
Motion to approve.
Any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Venter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long. Shepherd.
Aye.
Steinke.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Hosden.
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10(c), introductions. We have Ordinance 44-23. Madam City Clerk, please read title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 44-23, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within limits of the city of Cape Coral. By rezoning property described as lots 6, 7, and 8, Block 1039, Cape Coral, Unit 24, from professional to residential multifamily low zone. Property is located 1213 Academy Boulevard, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be June 7, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, let's move on to Ordinance 46-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 46-23, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral Code of Ordinances, Chapter 19, Water and Sewer Utilities, Article 7, Water Management, providing for applicability, providing for intent and purpose, providing for definitions, establishing permits, establishing design drawings, establishing irrigation system inspection, establishing irrigation design standards, establishing chemical injection, establishing completion of installation or substantial modification, establishing maintenance of irrigation systems, establishing alternative compliance, establishing exemptions, providing for emergency water conservation plan, providing for variance, providing for penalties, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be June 7, 2023.
Any discussion by staff or council? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance 48-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 48-23, an ordinance providing for the release of a permanent ingress and egress easement of a portion of Block 1842, Lots 5 and 6, Unit 45, Part 1, Cape Coral subdivision, as more particularly described herein, authorizing the mayor to execute a release of said easement, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be June 7, 2023.
Is there any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to Ordinance 49-23. Madam City Clerk, please read the title. Set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 49-23, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement for lease and management of the Cultural Park Theater between the city... Agreement for Lease and Management of the Cultural Park Theater between the City of Cape Coral and the Cultural Park Theater Company, Inc., a Florida not-for-profit corporation, for the lease of a portion of property owned by the City of Cape Coral, property located within Block 1139, Unit 23, Cape Coral, Florida, terminating the existing lease agreement between the City of Cape Coral and the Cultural Park Theater Company, Inc., dated November 30, 1982, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be June 7, 2023.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think in light of the discussion that we just had on the previous lease, what would be appropriate here was that we follow the same exact process. Member of my office, City Attorney's Office, and Real Estate meet with some members of the Board and the theater and make sure that we put together a term sheet that includes any of the items that I will gather from you all individually. And as such, this item may be premature if we're going to follow that same process.
Thank you. And maybe if you would, because I don't know if all of council have received the proposed ordinance for the theater, maybe go ahead and forward them a copy of that so they can review it.
It's in our.
It's in, it's in this backup.
Okay. All right. All righty then, any other council or staff discussion? Are we going to withdraw this?
We're going to withdraw it.
Okay. All right. Do you need a motion?
So I did announce the public hearing date.
No, it didn't. Be safe. Let's just go ahead and do a motion to withdraw that since it was announced.
All right, I'll make a motion, we withdraw 49-23.
Second. Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Cummings.
Aye.
Hunter.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Long.
Aye.
Shepherd. Steinkie.
Aye.
Welsh.
Aye.
Cosden.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, Item 11, Reports. Councilmember Cummings, report.
No.
Councilmember Hayden, report.
Yeah, I wanted to thank the council members who were at the Mayor Scholarship Awards Ceremony last week. The three school board members that were there, the principals, city staff that were there, it meant a lot to the Mayor Scholarship Committee, I know, to have all of you there. And I think what probably meant a lot to you, because it meant a lot to me, was hearing the speeches from the 15 winners, the 10 from the high schools, the four from the tech schools, and the one from the Public Service Academy. As I sat there and listened to those speeches, I just kept thinking to myself how I think our future's in pretty good hands in a lot of different fields that these students were going to go into. So I want to congratulate the Mayor Scholarship Fund for really reviving a scholarship program that maybe four or five years ago wasn't as relevant as it is now, and coming up with the money to award, you know, the high school kids with four-year, $1,000 reoccurring scholarships and then tech kids with over $1,000 scholarships. It means the world for their educational futures to have that money, because a lot of it's based on need. So congratulations again to the Mayor Scholarship.
Councilmember Long, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, real briefly, I'll echo those sentiments. I attended the Mayor Scholarship Center. It was an incredible event. I did also want to mention that, I believe, last week I was the council liaison voting member for the Charter School Governing Board. I just wanted to give a quick moment of appreciation to Mr. Mason and his staff for the job that they've done on that budget. By all accounts, it was leaps and bounds, in a great deal better shape than it has been in many, many years. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that they were a large part in that. And lastly, I did want to also give some credit to the Parks Department and whoever else was involved. My wife wanted to make sure that I mentioned she attended the event that was put on for the Mother-Son Dance, which apparently is something that happens regularly on an annual basis. And by all accounts, it was an excellent event, and so thank you all for putting that on. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepherd, report.
Your report.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. Yeah, on the 8th, I was involved with our Budget Review Committee. Our Chief of Police, I don't see him here, but he put together a fabulous presentation. Instead of answering directed questions, he actually built a presentation around those questions. I thought he did a great job, wanted to put kudos out to him. I attended, on the 11th, Lee County Tourist Development Council. Sharon Woodbury, from our EDO office, did a great job keeping people updated on what's going on here in the Cape and how we're progressing with a number of things that will help bring tourism to our area, strengthening our position and looking for funding that would come back to us from the Tourist Development Council. I also attended the Mayor Scholarship Award Ceremony and it was outstanding and the youth that were there were just incredible. And I think that's, it was expanded this year by the addition of public service. And so in last year, it was including technical colleges. This year, actually, public service was added. That was good to see. And the parents got acknowledged as much as the kids did. They're all doing a good job providing for our future there. The, I met this week, getting a report on the work that's been being done to have our best attempt at the funding that we might garner from 1.1 billion that's coming to our area, be coming through the county. But unless we're prepared to make a good presentation for the need, then our chances are diminished. So the people that are working on that are doing a fabulous job. I followed up on that today by going to the Chamber of Southwest Florida, a meeting that was held over in Fort Myers. Commissioner Kevin Rowan, who is leading the charge on that effort in garnering those funds for Lee County, and that will obviously be involved with the process of disseminating those dollars out to the municipalities in the county, was the speaker there. And they did a fantastic job there and gave some good resources on how we can make sure they were properly positioned to get our fair share for our citizens in our area there. So things are going well there, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended the Mayor Scholarship Awards. And as I said, last year, when they introduced the scholarships to the tech college, I was, being a kind of a blue collar worker myself, I'm glad that we were able to continue on with that this year and glad to see that we also added the scholarship for the one recipient that's going to be going to fire school, I believe, so, police. But maybe we could add fire for next year and have two, one for police, one for fire. So there's always room to improve and it's a great fund and was a great program. And I feel that those recipients, like Councilmember Hayden said, are light years ahead of where I was when I was their age. So it's glad to see that coming from our city. So other than that, that's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I represented the City of Cape Coral at the Continuum of Care Board Meeting, and I had my first time as the council liaison for the youth council. That was good. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a few things. First, I'd like to also mention Mr. Mason and his staff for that financial award that you guys got on our budget. You know, I know if I look back a few years ago, our financial department wasn't anywhere where it is today. And I know that's because of leadership. And when you have good leadership, you see those type of presentations. So thank you and your staff for everything and how you've turned that department around. Also, May 4th, I attended the, basically, the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Task Force Meeting. That particular task force, you know, we're moving forward with that. But more importantly, we've identified and got internal staff here at the city and with our members that are on some of the branches, the boards that are underneath the task force, we're meeting on a weekly basis, so we're working hard to develop that plan. I know many, if not all, of council met with Chief Lamb and some other staff members to finalize that particular proposal that we have to submit by the end of the month. That's not saying that's an ironclad proposal, but that gives us a starting point. So I just want to thank everyone who's involved in getting that presentation together by the end of the month. Also, May 4th, I was a guest speaker at the St. Andrews Catholic Church's Men's Dinner. On May the 5th, I attended the volunteer appreciation luncheon. Again, it was just a good opportunity just to say thank you for all the volunteers that we have throughout the city. Thankfully, all of our volunteers do an exceptional job and we're glad to have them a part of our team. On May the 8th, participated in the Florida League of Cities University Webinar Series. And also, May 8th, I participated in a Florida League of Cities Executive Committee Meeting. On May the 9th, I attended the Hurricane Recovery Executive Committee Meeting. On May the 9th, I was a celebrity waiter for the Pace Funky Fashion Show. So I can, when I go out to dinner now and I have those waiters and waitresses, I have a whole new perspective for them. But it was a great night. I think they raised a little over $60,000. I'm sorry?
Did you drop anything?
No, no, but I only cared two or three drinks at a time.
Did you start tipping them?
No.
No.
So that was a great event and they raised a lot of money. So I think it was the second year in a row I participated in that. Was also a guest speaker at the Mayor Scholarship Awards. Again, you know, the 15 recipients, incredible individuals. I wish we could have given out 100, because there was a lot of applicants that were exceptional. But it was a great evening and glad to participate. And Councilmember Hayden, when's the ball?
Oh, the ball's in September, I believe. I can't remember the exact date, but it is available on the Mayor Scholarship website.
Yeah, and I would ask our community to try to participate. That's a fundraiser. That's how we are able to give those scholarships to those 15 and 18.
Yeah, it'll actually be the first one in a long time.
So.
Saturday, the 30th of September.
Thank you.
Six to nine.
Okay. Also, on May the 12th, I went to the governor's press conference over in Fort Myers for the bill signing over there. And this morning, I issued a proclamation for code enforcement for Appreciation Week. The first week of June, I believe it is, is appreciation for code enforcement officers. So I was able to come here this morning and thank them for their hard work and dedication as well. Also, I'll be attending the Southwest Florida League of Cities Meeting tomorrow, Luncheon. For any council members, if you would like to attend, it's tomorrow at 11 o'clock. Also, for the second year in a row, I will be given the 2023 Home Rule Hero Award for my advocacy in Tallahassee throughout the legislative session. So I think 150 individuals out of a little over 2,000 elected officials here in the state will get it, so, as far as municipal elected officials. So be glad to receive that award again tomorrow. And that's all I have. Only one thing I wanted to mention, Mr. City Manager, I forgot to mention it to you in our meeting, and I know I sent a email back on May 4th, Crosswalk improvements throughout the city. I know there was a grant for that, and I know that, I believe it was the county. And just to give us an update on where that is, because I know that was talked about several months ago, so I'd like to find out where we are with that, especially since I did get a few emails regarding that. Mr. Deputy City Attorney, report.
Yeah, for your special meeting on Wednesday, May 24th, I'd like to request to add an introduction, and it's the Ordinance 5223 about the boards and committees.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yep. You just need a consensus?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Everybody okay with that? Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the start of the meeting today, we had the Memorial Day Celebration, but I also want to just make an announcement that this week is also National Police Week. National Police Week pays special recognition to the law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty protecting and providing safety to our residents. There was a ceremony today. I just want to make sure that you all are aware that this is also Police Week. And I know we had another ceremony, but we have a very similar situation with our police folks and just, if you could, recognition to them this week as well would be appreciated. I was also going to mention the Distinguished Budget Award. Mr. Mayor, you grabbed that. But I do want to congratulate all of the budget staff and finance staff that helped put that together. And then lastly, we're racing towards the end of the month. On the 31st, we are going to have our Hurricane Expo. And if you haven't seen it, our Communications Department with the Fire Department put out a first-ever Cape Coral Hurricane Guide. And it's just a wonderful publication that has a lot of information that should be very helpful for our residents. But on the 31st, at the Mercola Market, we're going to have the Hurricane Expo. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Item 13, Time and Place of Future Meeting. We have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for Wednesday, May 24, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. here in council chambers. And we also have a special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, May 24, 2023, beginning at 12:00 p.m. also here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.